August 27th. Invite everyone to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
........................................................................
Okay, to start us off tonight, we'll start with public comment. Anyone who's here for public comment, please do so now. There's a sign-in sheet. And just a reminder for anyone who's here for public comment, it's an opportunity for the public to make a comment, not necessarily dialogue between the Board of Selectmen and the public. So we will hear you and contemplate at a later point. Any public comment? Okay. Moving on. We have the approval of our minutes from the last meeting.
Yeah, since I think we're doing a technical relation for some of them, I'm going to, I'm going to motion that we table approval of the minutes for August 13th, 2018 until our next meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Motion passes. Introduction new staff member. Mr. Bedard, local building inspector, inspector. Welcome.
Hey.
Hi.
I am Joel Bedard. I'm the new local building inspector, and I look forward to working with the town.
Great, wonderful.
Welcome to town. When was your first day?
I started July 30th.
July 30th, great.
I've seen him.
Yeah.
Any thoughts or anything you've noticed in driving around town?
Um, no. It's a different experience from coming from a contractor's point of view to a inspector's point of view, but, uh, you know, be fair about the whole process and do justice to it.
Great. Well, thank you. Thanks for coming to town.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thank you. Nice meeting all of you.
You too.
See smart guy go right out the door.
Yeah, I don't blame him.
Perfect, he knows that's done.
Right here. He doesn't have it.
Uh, next we'll do licensing. Do I have a motion to move into licensing? On favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're in licensing, and we've got quite a few things going tonight. Our top of the batting order is a change of manager and of beneficial interest on our recently opened Jade North Andover. So is there someone who can speak to that for us? Please. Have you just again state your name and your address?
Yeah, my name is Yikang Wong, and my address 50 Des Moines Row, Quincy, Massachusetts.
Welcome.
Yeah. Because we need a change of manager because Mei Wu and Zhang Jie, Zhang Jie, they got a better deal for the business. That's why they leaving, and we need a change of the manage, manager.
So there's a change in the ownership, right? There's a, as I'm reading this in our package here, one of the owners is now left the partnership?
Yeah, they, they leaving, I take over their share. Yeah.
And so you have now, there are...
Still like same people.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And one partner now has 50%?
Yeah.
Oh, ownership.
Yeah.
I understand. Anything from an operational standpoint that we would see either legally or just the way you operate with this shift, with this change? Anything?
Yeah, we, we, we doing everything by the lawyer, they help us to do it. Yeah, it doesn't change anything, yeah. Just a change to the manager.
In, in our packet, we have from the ABC, the Alcohol Beverage Commission, we've got their full documentation that, as I read through it, it looks satisfactory. But I want to ask the, my fellow selectmen if they have any questions.
So is this, this isn't really a change of management, it's a change of ownership, is what it is?
It looks like to me a change of ownership.
Okay, so it's not...
But the form is a change of management slash ownership.
Okay. So that, yeah, that just clarifies it because, so it's going to be the same manager is still running the day-to-day operation?
Yeah.
But you've taken over 25% more ownership of the, as one of your partners has left, is really what this is about?
Yeah.
Okay. That's fine. I'm fucking with that.
Did you want, is there someone else who would want to speak to this?
Yeah.
Apologize for being a few minutes late. Brian Vaughn, attorney for the Jade Group. You're exactly correct. We have a, um, a two-tier transaction seeking the approval of a transfer of beneficial interest where, you know, there are presently four owners. One of them is being bought out, and Ken is going to become a 50% owner in the entity. Secondly, we're seeking to change the manager to Ken Fu, who's not here tonight, but he is a current member of the, um, of the entity.
Oh, so there is a manager change as well?
Yes.
Is that daily? Okay.
Right. And I believe it's just, um, the change of manager is what requires the public notice.
Okay.
Uh, both, both pieces of the transaction do require ABCC approval, obviously, but there's absolutely no change to, in terms of any new owners being brought in. It's strictly one owner who's being, their interest being purchased.
Okay.
So we're going from, from four owners to three owners.
Okay.
And I would also want to just note that the, the change in manager, the individual who is being taken over as manager, is currently actively involved in the organization. He's over there constantly. So, um, from a, um, you know, a, the standpoint of the operation of what they're doing, there really should be little, little change.
It looked like you worked with the group for about 10 years or so. Did I see that right in the resume?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
No.
Can I have a motion for this request to change?
I need approval.
Second.
All right. Any more discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Close, none? Passes? Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have a, I'm going to get my mic here. Ashley Valencourt for a one-day, a wine and malt license for an end-of-summer celebration at our town common on Thursday, August 30th. That's pretty soon, 2018?
Couple days.
Mr. I'm going to recuse myself for this, so I'm going to step out.
All right. Thank you, Selectman Valencourt.
(laughing).
So you've been busy since the last time, right?
I know, so...
Always go to watch it on his phone.
Okay. I brought Chris Buco with me today from Macklin's, since they're our official sponsor for the alcohol, beer and wine on the commons. So we know that we're set up for kind of like a drinking garden with the double fences situated around with the six-foot perimeter. Anyone serving alcohol is tip-certified. We'll have Chris serving wine from Macklin's, and then there are five or six local breweries that will be setting up like tables essentially, handing out wine that'll be tip-certified. And then also, we'll have a check-in at the front. There's only one entrance into the drinking area, checking all IDs. We have wristbands and all that. So I think that...
Awesome.
Yeah.
And we got all our, I see, police, fire, building inspector, all went through that. The insurance is here, obviously, Chris, you've got experience with that.
Yeah.
I do have a question regarding DPW, and I think that goes to Ray, right? But, so the fencing to go around the drinking area, I don't know who supplies that. So I was under the impression that the town supplies it, but I don't know how that works. If we could talk about that. Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, you can talk tomorrow, we'll figure it out.
Okay, okay.
Call me tomorrow.
Okay, perfect.
Just a couple of quick questions.
Yes.
So the, the beer is going to come, these are going to be beer distributors handing out free beer? What is the...
I'll just jump in quick.
Thank you.
So, we had a liquor store in Amesbury, I know it's a different town and everything, but, um, they had a big festival up there every year, and I, for three years, 2015, 16, 17, I ran it. By the last year, it was like 900 people, so this is way smaller scale, obviously. But I understand the ins and outs, so I know the, uh, tip-certified. So basically, it's these breweries come in, which everyone they hire has to get tip-certified, and they just pour little two-ounce samples of beer.
Great.
Every brewery brings like three or four different varietals of the beer. Um, and people come in, they show their ID, they get a wristlet to prove that they're good. These people know how to deal with people in the event they got drunk, though we're not pouring enough beer for anyone to actually get drunk. So they are on the ball, they're professionals when it comes to this, and I'm going to be pouring some wine. I'm also tip-certified, so I know how to turn someone away in the event that they are misbehaving.
So as relates to the, the wine component of this, you're pouring stock wine that's in your store, or is it...
No, it got, it's been donated by a wholesaler.
Cool. So if you could provide us some information from the wholesaler, that's, because for the board's, needs to come from the wholesaler unless, so if we just provide something that says that the wholesale is going to...
Yeah, exactly.
Provide that'd be great.
And obviously, Macklin's is involved, but really, it's just using the connection Macklin's has to how I've met these people, like all the breweries are donating the beer and everything like that, too, so, got it.
And the insurance runs through...
It's me personally.
Okay.
And so who's doing this? Is it, is it technically the festival committee? Is it just...
Well, there, that was a little bit of a gray area, so I, it's basically me, but it's under the festival committee, kind of like a hybrid. I think if we were to take this on next year, it would be formally under the, the festival committee, but for now, it's kind of like a little bit of a gray area since it was so new, and it was just me running it.
So it's paid for the insurance, is that what you're...
So this really is to the benefit, the town is running, is, is running this year the operating, but you are really organized at four...
For the town, yeah. So basically, it's free for everyone. We are, like I said prior, it's like a suggested donation, $10 entry fee. From that, all the proceeds will go back to the town. Still thinking by, thinking about the middle school field, I thought that was a great idea, maybe a new stage to the common. I don't know, we're just thinking about, you know, what our options are, depending on what we fundraise.
It's all good, whatever you choose.
Yeah, right, exactly. So something, it'll go back to the town, but it's been promoted that way when communicating to the public, that's what we've been saying, so.
Great. So we just, the chatter over here, sorry, because we know that that's not always the keenest thing to do, is, it's just about making sure the insurance certificate names the town as the name insured. So we need, the town needs to be named as an insured, we're just not seeing that. It may just be a quick look at it. So you need to make sure that you're, so, as part of touching base with Ray, just make sure that, any feedback we have about the insurance certificate? Because you're on town property, we need to be named insured, and we're not, just in a quick look...
The town needs to be listed as an official insurer and a certificate.
Okay. We're not, we're not seeing...
Okay, if it's not, we can update it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that'll be easy.
That's just important for us.
Yeah.
Sorry for the chatter in the background, that's what we're trying to sort our way through.
So I think that's it from our side. Stachi's Pizza's providing the food, so they're doing an assortment of things, also donated, and I think that's...
That's great.
The whole we need is great weather.
I hope. I mean, it heard a little bit of rain, but we'll see. I'm not worried about it.
It's going to be good, good. Thank you again for, any other questions from the committee here? Town managers, anything else that we need to touch base on? Well, I'd entertain a motion for moving forward on this.
Need approval?
All right.
Second.
Any more discussion?
They are asking for a fee to be waived, too, so...
Oh, that's true.
I would take that as a friendly amendment, and the fee to be waived.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor for the amended motion?
Aye.
Aye. Passes?
Thank you.
One abstention?
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you on Thursday.
Or six to nine, I'm sorry.
All right. Recuse.
Yeah, please show up, too.
Yeah, you're just going to, the optional yoga from six to seven, and then party.
Does the, does the plan, the plan...
Yeah. Hope to see you guys.
See ya. Great work.
Good to have you back.
Selectman Valencourt?
Good to be back.
Would you like to know how it went?
I'll get them full, uh, thank you.
All right.
We have a, let's see, what's the next on the list here? Merrimack College is requesting eight one-day liquor licenses, all alcohol liquor license on Thursday, September 13th, from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. for a block party at, at the parking lot.
1:00 to 7:00.
Yep, yep, I'm sorry. Yep, thank you. At the Welcome Center. A wine and malt license on Friday, the 14th, from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. for a block party. A wine and malt license on Saturday, the 15th, from 6:00 to 11:00 p.m. for concessions at the Rogers Center. Wine and malt license for Saturday, the 22nd, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for concessions at the Stadium Pavilion, football games, I think. Wine and malt for Wednesday, the 26th, from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. for reception at the Rogers Center. A wine and malt license on Friday, the 28th, from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the football stadium, again, at the Pavilion. A wine and malt license on Sunday, the 29th, from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at concessions at the athletic fields. And a wine and malt license on Saturday, September 30th, from 6:00 to 11:00 p.m. at the Rogers Center for performing arts. Anybody here from Merrimack? That's a pretty big lineup.
(inaudible).
We've got all in our package, we have all the documentation signed up from police and fire, I see. Are there any questions or concerns from board members regarding this?
No.
Do we norm, I don't recall off the top of my head about prior instances where we've had a liquor license go to 11:00 p.m. on a Sunday night.
Saturday night.
Saturday.
Sunday, Sunday, so, Sunday, September 30th.
Oh, sorry, I was looking at the one above.
I would just say it's interior, it's, it's interior, where, it would be a real concern if it was exterior. This is inside the Rogers Center.
And so on instances like that, of course, we always just alert the police in general, anyways, right? I mean, that's when school's back in session, so...
I, I thank you for picking up on that. Yeah, there is a difference. Being as somebody who lives right behind them, I do know when, when it's 10 o'clock and when it's not 10 o'clock.
Do they have a separate entertainment license for that facility, or is that, I'll cover it? And what, what time does that go until, and should we, should we correlate?
Yeah, I'm not sure that I remember that they have an entertainment license for the provisions of an entertainment license for someplace that holds like plays. Uh, I'd have to look, I, to be honest, I was, I'm not prepared to answer the question. I don't remember them having an entertainment license, which we typically hold for, you know, having at a restaurant or...
Right.
Right, as opposed to a place that has organized functions like plays. But I certainly can check and tell you what the entertainment license. You certainly could make a motion that this be consistent with that of the entertainment license if one exists, if you'd like to do that. Or you could limit the times. Whatever you'd like to do.
Do we have a meeting prior to on that day?
What's the date of that? Uh, we have a September 10th meeting, yep.
Well, they have one on, on September 15th, but it's till 11 also, similar one.
That's a Friday, another Friday, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I mean, there are no neighbors here, we learn about the neighbors and neighbors or butters, right?
Well, you wouldn't, again, if at a Rogers Centers event, this is a, I'm going to call it a play, but some kind of art-related, performing art-related activity. So these would be fairly consistent with those kinds of activities that have been going on at the Rogers Centers for any number of years. We don't, you know, I don't think there's even a traditional community notification in that case?
No.
Because it's not exterior to the building.
Plus, they have their own police department.
They have their own police department, yeah.
Does a pretty good job of keeping things...
The Rogers Center's in the middle of the campus, not like right next to...
That doesn't matter.
You can still hear it, huh?
If it's outside, doesn't matter where it is on campus, but, no, I get your point.
But it's inside.
But it's inside, yeah, there's, there's just day and night, so, I would just say as, as a butter, you know, I don't hear the inside, but I can appreciate the 11 o'clock.
But I, but I would say that if their entertainment license is ten, if they have one, I'm, I'm actually, don't believe they do, but I could be wrong. If they do have one, it wouldn't seem to be good practice to extend the liquor beyond the entertainment.
Right.
If you look any outside, I know the other venues we typically have are outside, but, but having people congregate after the event in terms of, into sort of a liquor van isn't really the point. So if you'd like to restrict it in that way to anything that may be on a liquor license?
Yeah, I don't remember ever approving an entertainment license for them either, so I would assume if they don't have one, we could always double-check, but I think, I think we could make a condition that if, if they do have an entertainment license, which I don't believe they do, that it runs in conjunction with that, the end of it.
Sure. And we'll double-check and make sure you have the information about it.
So I would entertain a motion to that effect.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve for the request for one-day all alcohol and wine and malt licenses as detailed by the chair, with the exception of September 30th, we'll run that in conjunction with any entertainment license that they may have in place.
Make sure it's consistent.
For the stop time.
Right.
Stop time.
I'll second that motion.
Any more discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. objections, no? Ask. Okay, Merrimack, good to go. Time's eight. All right, and we have a request for three one-day all liquor licenses for events at Smolak Farms. Oops, I'm sorry.
Got all up, you were ready to go, and then you just went right past you. That was pretty good.
I'm sorry, man. So let me, my apologies. It's a request from JT Thompson of Notch Brewing for four one-day wine and malt licenses for the Beer Garden at Stevens Coolidge Place on Thursday, the 13th, from 4:00 to 9:00. Friday, the 14th, from 4:00 to 9:00. Saturday, the 15th, from noon to 7:00 p.m. And Sunday, the 16th, from noon to 6:00. And good to have you back.
Thanks. We're excited to come back to Stevens Coolidge. It's where our entire event series kicked off with the trustees, so we had a wonderful first experience here. I've done a lot of these since we were at Stevens Coolidge Place back in May, and, and we've learned quite a bit on how to have the event run smoothly and, and tight, so we're, yeah, it's, uh, we're following a standard Beer Garden format on the Thursday and the Friday. It'll be just like it was last time. We'll be in back of the house, and as we discussed last time, we have sort of the natural boundaries of the property, whether it's the fence along the road, the fences in the pasture in the back, and then signs that say no alcohol past this point on any of the walkways where people could walk out with beers. We'll set up tables in the back lawn, and people will be able to bring their friends and family. All of our, our events have been very family-friendly, and they can come out and enjoy the evening as long as we have nice weather. For the Saturday, we are doing a ticketed Oktoberfest modeled after the one that we do at our taproom in Salem. So it is a ticketed event. Guests will have like a nice take-home mug that they can take home with them. We're limiting that to 400 tickets, so that'll be just a hair more than the, the biggest amount of attendees we had back in May, so it's a very manageable number. And then that Sunday, we're doing the Beer Garden in conjunction with a craft fair that's being organized by the staff at Stevens Coolidge. So it's, uh, we have two nights of Beer Garden being the main focus on the Thursday and Friday, and then the, the Sunday is the craft fair, and then the Saturday is the festival, so...
Nice.
Yeah.
So you said 400 cars, 400 people, but that's about how many cars, do you think?
Um, gosh, that's really hard to say. We saw a lot of groups come in, so when, the trustees have done all the counts at all of our events, and they count children with that, so I would imagine with the amount of families we had, 200 cars. And talking with Kate, who's the, the facilities manager there, she's, she said we've had more than 400 people at some of our events in the past. We're totally equipped to handle the parking side of things.
I was going to ask, how many people did you have at that event in May? Because I know from Facebook is any indication, it was quite popular, so I was wondering how many people you had.
As best as they could count, we, I think the most we had was 300, about 385, so...
What does the parking, because I know there's the, it's a grass lot, it's not striped, so how many people, many cars can that lot across the street typically hold?
I can't speak to that level of knowledge. That's something that, that the folks from the trustees at Stevens Coolidge would be able to answer.
I love that you, you do the event, I'm just, even the people who have brought this to my attention say they love that you have these events. But that because there's, they're so popular, it's on a busy road, and there's not always enough parking, or these people don't always take advantage, if there is, of the set-aside parking. So there is parking on the side streets, there's parking sometimes on both sides of narrower side streets. And so I, I guess I would pitch it back, because I know that we've had conversations with the town manager's office about if we were to prove this, could there be some type of parking plan in place so that, like, for instance, Wood Lane, there's an extension of Wood Lane that is right off of Andover Street.
It's a dead end.
It is a dead end, and it's, it's fairly narrow, but there are homes that are on there, and...
We are having some conversations with the Stevens Coolidge folks about entrance off of 125 as a longer-term, because the property comes all the way down to 125, and there's some grassy areas, large grassy areas as well. We're having some conversations with them about, given the nature of these events, to provide a more easier access point that doesn't congest, and therefore, that would then allow us to limit some of the more residential neighborhood parking, because there's less of that, obviously, surrounding the big grassy area. So we've had conversations with them. I can't tell you that those conversations have concluded, but it's, it's, it's part of a conversation from the concerns that have been raised by you and others, that we like the events, we want the events, we want them to be successful. We need to find a way to make sure we manage, especially when there's multiple events. And so we're having conversations with about an access point off of 125.
So for these, because this is more, I mean, this is within the next month, right? Am I wrong?
Yeah.
Yeah, within the next month.
Yeah.
Is there a way that we can at least proactively go out there and make sure that if they're parking on one side of the street, it's only one side for the narrower side road or...
They do have posted those parking signs up there.
We did that.
On Chestnut Street, but not on, like, I mean, I'm just being frank, there was a concern raised, and it wasn't a complaint, because this person said it was an enjoyable event, but just when there were cars parked on both sides of Wood Lane, residents couldn't necessarily navigate through. And then, I mean, the concern that was brought up was specifically about public safety.
Other streets other than Wood Lane, so we'll talk about Chestnut, I know we addressed some specific concerns and put some barriers and barrels up. So, Wood Lane, are there other streets as relates to these events if we're unable to gain access of 125 sooner? Are there specific streets that we should be looking at, some kinds of limits?
I haven't heard of this, but my only other guess in that general area would be if you were driving with the Stevens Coolidge house on your left.
Yep.
As you pass, there's a, there's a, right after the open space, there's a cape, and then right after the cape, there's a little side street that's a oak something.
We'll work with the traffic folks to sort of expand some of those limitations.
It'll force folks to walk a little longer, but quite frankly, that's the nature of this kind of event, so that's okay too.
And I hope, keep coming back, I just don't, I know that there were questions about that, right?
Yeah, sure.
About not too inconveniencing residents that live in that neighborhood and making sure that they can still access.
And we want, it sounds like the board, and I think most people want this to continue and succeed, so we're looking toward a longer-term solution, so these questions don't come up, but I think in the short term, we'll look to put limits on the one-side parking on Wood Lane, and I don't remember the street, but I know exactly what you're speaking about.
Yeah.
To see if we can do that to make sure that we reduce the impact on the neighborhood.
The only other thing, and I don't, I don't recall where it is, but if they're gonna be parking, coming off of 125 and on the grass, maybe Donnie and maybe Dickie would know better, there's underground cow tunnels that are over in that area, and I would hate to have cars going over it and get the surprise of their life, you know, as they...
Well, if they're coming in on their property, these are the things we...
I've never seen it.
You don't know that?
No.
Donnie, you know where, you know what I'm talking about. Yeah, there's underground cow tunnels.
They don't think they use them anymore, but they were...
I know, but if you're driving a car over it...
They tried to left.
I know, everyone's looking at me, I'm like, I swear to God, they're...
Yeah, we'll...
We don't, and it, is it going to be parked?
If Dick can't speak to it, I'm speechless, because usually he has, especially in that area, has a great good respect.
I've got you on one, Dickie.
So, we will certainly look at the kind of restrictions that make sure we're sensitive to what's happening with the neighbors and make sure the event is continued to be well-received and looking at, just wanted you to know, we're looking at some longer-term approaches to make sure that these kind of events and other events can continue at the location.
The challenges of having a successful event, these are problems that are, you know, we can work through, so. I really appreciate it and very excited that you came back to our community, you know, just from personal experience looking around, people were excited. And the other thing was the momentum, that the word got out in the community very quickly, the kind of event it was, so there were more families and more kids. And I love the way you're tying it in with the festivals and making it more of a cultural, and I think much like our farmer's market, you know, which has expanded to include, you know, craft component, I think that's, our community is really receptive to that, so.
We like fun stuff.
Keep thinking about other ways to do this.
Yes, we are, now that we're getting towards the end of the summer, other ways are on the front of our minds, so.
Fabulous, fabulous.
Yes.
I think Lorraine might be the speaker.
Yes, Lorraine, there's one. And there's another one, Phil said.
Carney?
No, that's the other one.
That's the other way, but that's probably a similar situation.
Well, this, you do have Franklin School if you're really stuck, but it would require some walking on a busy road.
We'll let the traffic folks work to try to expand some of those limitations, one-side parking.
Thank you.
Well, I'll entertain a motion to address...
Chair, I move the Board of Selectmen, as License Commission has approved the request of J.T. Thompson of Notch Brewing for four one-day wine and malt licenses as presented.
And drive a second.
Aye.
Any more discussion? All those...
Mr. Chair, it looks like there may be an rebuttal that's in the audience, that seems to be, I don't know if that's, I'm just throwing that out there, that may not be...
Yeah, you should.
I don't know what the form, so help me with the procedure.
Okay, so we're in a vote right now, so we've motioned a second, we, it's supposed to be a discussion, but, I mean, I guess if we didn't recognize an rebuttal, I can withdraw my motion without prejudice and allow the rebuttal to speak, and then we can re-motion it after that, if that's the case. Right, does that sound like an appropriate?
It's close enough.
Okay, so I will withdraw my motion without prejudice?
Okay.
And we need a second on that, or is this, okay, so it's done?
So, motion withdrawn, and I would, I'll open this to any rebuttal to speak.
Thank you. Kelly Cormier, I live at 169 Andover Street, so I'm right at the corner of Andover and Wood Lane. So, just a question on the location of where the Beer Garden's going to be on the property.
It's, it's going to be behind the house.
Behind Stevens, the state, okay.
Stevens Coolidge House mentioned, the main home.
Okay.
Yes. In the grassy lawn there, there's a dirt road that comes in and cuts around the backside.
Yep, goes right behind my house. That's my house right there, yep.
Oh, right, in the corner where it turns left.
Is it the gray house or the brown house?
On the brown house, yeah.
Yes.
It's our brown house. You go the other way, towards the, towards the brick houses that are part of the estate, or towards the brown houses going towards Wood Lane?
I'm not sure which side Wood Lane is, but we kept everything directly behind the Stevens Coolidge house and the dirt road where the fence is. So, if you, if you think of the grass lawn area, where that greenhouse is, it's mostly that grass lawn.
Okay, that, I guess that's, I think there's a little bit of confusion there. I spoke with the manager, Kevin Block, and he told me that they were going to move the events off of that lawn, because that, that's right on my fence, right on our property line. So, especially for those events going to nine o'clock. I have a two-and-a-half-year-old whose bedroom window was right in the Beer Garden and, you know, on the, on the stage. So, he had mentioned that they were going to try to move events like that, whether it be large groups of people, he mentioned, the last event there was 900 people, that they would try to shift that to another area on the property, just to kind of help lessen the impact to those of us that live right there. So, I don't know if that's still on the table, or...
I haven't heard about that one way or the other, but I'm not, I'm not, you know, we want to be good, like, good partners here, like, I'm certainly not gonna dig my heels in over this. So, I'd be happy to have a follow-up conversation with Kevin and Kate.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great, yeah, because they, I know at least, I spoke with Kevin, and he told me they were going to move them. I've heard of future events like this, and he also talked about the porta potty, not putting it on the fence line right by my daughter's playground.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
And things like, given all of the property, just to move it slightly away from her window.
Big enough property, sure.
Yeah, they should, then that was Kevin, that's what he told me, he's like, this is big enough, we can move it. So, I just would like to make sure that that happens, especially since it looks like they are going to go till nine on Thursday, when he had told me he thought they'd stop sooner, so.
Just a little nap.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, there's this state, that's my house right there, so, my favorite, right in those trees, that's the big one.
Yeah, the tree over there.
Yeah.
I think it's...
That's my house.
Everybody's looking, like, everybody who's watching at home is doing the same thing, everybody else is doing it, so everybody's gone to Google Maps and seeing where this is.
So, you, now you know. Yeah, so it's great, I mean, I want to go drink beer. I grew up in beer tents, I grew up in Germany, so I'm all for it, I want to go drink beer, but I want to be able to put my baby to sleep at night too.
Absolutely.
It's gotta balance it out. That's it, thank you.
No, I appreciate you speaking, and I think what we would ask is, I'll ask everybody here to comment, but we'll, we would ask that the Stevens Estate, there is a lot of land around that, so if they can be considerate to these considerations, I think that would...
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, we want to get along with the people in this community, so.
Yeah, we'll come back for additional events, so yeah, we want to make sure.
Sure.
So, Mr. Chair, I will make, reset my motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the request of J.T. Thomas of Notch Brewing for four one-day wine and malt licenses as presented.
Second.
Any more discussion? Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, passes?
All right, thank you.
We'll see you in three weeks.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
And then, when we're done, maybe we can change information.
I agree.
All, so you can...
Great, thank you.
All right, and now, we have requests for one-day liquor licenses from butlers and bars for events to be held at Smolak Farms on the 20, on the 8th, the 28th, and the 29th. They are from, let's see, on the 8th, from 4:00 to 10:00 P.M. On the 28th, from 5:00 P.M. to 10:00 P.M. And on the 29th, from 4:00 P.M. to 10:00 P.M. And we've got, one's a reunion, I believe a rehearsal dinner, and the last one is a wedding. Is there anybody here to speak to this? In our package, we have all the sign-offs from the police, fire, and building, there are no conditions, any, any observations or comments?
No, we have approval.
All right.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, passes? All right, enjoy your events, as they say.
Mr. Chair, I move that we move out of licensing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're out of licensing.
Okay, so now we will pick back up with consent items. We have a recycling dividend program grant. We've voted on accepting the grant, the amount of $10,400 from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. I don't know, Mr. Town Manager, if you want to say anything about this?
Sure, with the help of the Sustainability Committee, Jim Sniffer worked on a grant application which was submitted and awarded. You see the attached list of, I think, $2 million, north of $2 million was awarded. We, on average, we're probably higher than the average grant awarded, which was nice to be used toward education programs to enhance, increase our recycling in the community. I know Jim looks forward to working with the Sustainability Committee to do exactly that. Probably good time to note that, to watch our social media accounts, because there's been some interesting tweets about, and Facebook posts about what is and not allowed in recycling. So, as a, as a community and certainly as a, as a region, where we pride ourselves in expanding the recycling initiatives, I think what happens over time in single-stream recycling, we hear this back from our contractor often, is that certain things end up in the recycling stream which were not intended for the recycling stream. So, here's the really good news, generationally, we now lean toward putting something in the recycling bin, where we used to lean in putting it, taking it out. But we do find that the amount of, a fair amount of waste cannot be processed by the recycling facility, because the things we think can be processed, simply the plastic bags, you know, we take a plastic, series of plastic bottles, put them in a plastic bag, you know, a small sort of supermarket bag, and put that in the recycling, that whole piece of that stream cannot be processed. Because when it comes out with the material in the bag, the bag can't be processed, things like that. Sometimes, depending on the nature of the pizza you choose, if the, if there's enough staining on the box, can't be processed, there's food material on it. So, please pay attention to what we, we haven't been restricted in terms of what the recycling company is willing to process, but I think we're getting closer to those days where it might happen. Recycling currently, the per-ton cost for recycling processing now exceeds the per-ton cost for trash processing. The world has changed, the large communities that have recently bid recycling contracts are finding that their contract is going up by hundreds of thousands of dollars. A lot of the neighboring communities are finding that their overall trash cost, because of the recycling cost, some tunes we're hearing, $300,000 to $500,000 dollar impact on their budget, because the cost to dispose of their recycling is now more costly per ton than to process trash. In our case, we have a very positive agreement, it's basically net zero, slightly better than that, and we have it for the next five years, we hope that the market changes, but folks are now paying between $70 and $100 a ton to process recycling.
Wow.
So, we haven't yet had to really sort of crack the whip on what we reject, but some communities are now doing that, leaving recycling on the, on the curb, because they just can't process it any longer. So, it's a whole different...
So, one thing about the, the comments, and it, I, I think there may be a way to kind of help get that message out. If you kind of go to the town website, it's not immediately evident where that list is. And I would think of anything that people would go to the town website, that's kind of, where do I get this information? It just, it's in a logical place, but it's not in an easily accessible place. Is there a way that we can get that out there more visible?
Yes. So, if you go to the town's homepage, centered right in the middle is a, is a trash and recycling button.
Right.
Says trash and recycling. It's the, the series of five buttons up top. I say the middle, but there are six items, so there is no real middle. Right. It's right next between, hey, pay your bills, and here's the budget.
Yes.
It's a nice, good strategic spot. You go talk about trash. If you click on the trash button, there's another very accessible link that, that shows the flyer as relates to those kinds of things. It's called current happenings flyer, and it aligns the kinds of things that we're talking about, that gives you that kind of idea. We also have engaged our social media intern, it's currently not opening off the internet, but we have engaged our social media intern to have Trash Tuesdays. So, you'll find if you follow us on social media that there'll be some kind of trash reference on Tuesdays, to try to make some connection, and sometimes we'll put the flyer out. So, we will continue to emphasize that, because I think it's important, and see if we can find more pronounced ways. But generally speaking, we've tried to bring the trash and recycling closer to the front of the homepage, and we're working to strive to do that.
Yeah, I think just that law, anything that can just, you know, kind of simple, most simple, here's the, you know, where do I click on the list for what's good and what's bad? And those tips, I think, are really important, because that's also not so evident.
Yep, and there's, on the left panel, so from the homepage, you've cooked on trash and recycling, left panel is a series of options. One of them is a recycling FAQ, and we have a lawnmower list of recycling, what can and can't be placed into your recycling stream. So, we'll continue to find ways to sort of connect the dots of the other ways we communicate, flyers and social media and the rest, so that these kinds of things can be easily found by residents. Yep, worthwhile doing.
So, one question, since we're talking trash.
Since we're talking trash.
It's been about a year since we've got a new poller in place, I think almost just a year, right?
Wow, time flies.
September-ish, yep.
Any feedback, any, how was the overall perception? Do we, have we seen a decrease in the number of complaints that we, what's the overall feedback in the community on the performance of this new trash poller?
Well, I would say, just to broaden the conversation of both the trash and recycling, the overall service delivery is improved. So, for both the poller we had, who still does the recycling, and the new poller, it doesn't mean we don't get complaints, oftentimes folk showing up at 7:20 when the trash came up at 7:00. But the reliability, trash vehicles and recycling vehicles are showing up on the day scheduled, and where we had a regular weekly, Wednesdays being picked up on Thursday, that has gone away. So, you'll always have a level of trash complaint, that's okay, but it's not about showing up and picking up the trash. The trucks have shown up every day on the scheduled day, picked up the trash by the day scheduled, unless there's some storm and we tell them otherwise, which is, for us, significant. And the alternate routes that we talked about also helped us by that balance, rebalancing the routes have also worked.
I've noticed if I don't get it out there by 7:20.
7:20, are you kidding? 6:20 for me.
That's a little early.
Stop it really early.
Let us know about that, that's a little early.
Pull it up.
It's really early.
So, for this $10,000 grant, it does, it says that we will support recycling programs, are there any ideas already about what we'd be using?
Yep, the recycling committee was part of, there's a narrative that went along with that grant that was very specific around the schools, a lot of it, around helping in terms of the schools and processing and food waste and other materials that come out of the school cafeteria.
Well, I'd like to just say, hoping that we accept it, kudos, not just to our town staff, but to the Sustainability Committee, because I know that there are literally members of that committee running around getting photocopies, making sure that everything's in order.
Yes, absolutely.
And so, that's an example right here of, when you have a robust town, a robust town committee with good people on it, it can yield literal results in the form of money for our town. So, thank you to all the members and...
Absolutely.
...the town staff.
Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair, I have a motion that we accept the grant from DEP, in the amount of $10,400.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Yes, to the Sustainability Committee and RDPW. Next item is request to surplus a police department vehicle.
Now, this is a standard practice we have, typically based on a combination of pure roadway miles and what we call engine miles, sitting there and idling, and all of our vehicles, this is a front-line police vehicle, dog's charger. In all cases, we are recirculating those dollars back to purchase a replacement vehicle. So, again, we're in a no-vehicle-add policy, we've been in that place for many years, we don't net, net, net add vehicles, and so we'll trade this vehicle in toward the purchase of a replacement vehicle, which would have already been programmed through the operating budget.
Do I hear a motion?
Move that Board of Selectmen approve the request of Police Chief Charles Gray to surplus three vehicles outlined in his memorandum dated August 21st, 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, the next item we have is a request of Columbia Gas to excavate Bayfield Drive for the purpose of gas line maintenance and reinstalling a test station. We have someone, thank you very much.
Yes, hi.
Your name and address, please.
Jesus Figueroa, Three Shady Lane Kings in New Hampshire, work for Columbia Gas.
Great, can you tell us a little bit about the project?
It's not much of a big project, it's, we're only excavating probably under five feet square, or probably gonna be about three by three. We're just gonna be replacing one of our existing facilities and also adding sacrificial annodes to help with the system maintenance.
Boy, you got the short straw, you had to stay here all night for that. You're a good sport.
Okay, we have feedback from the police that a police detail will be required?
Yes.
Fine, okay. I don't have any other questions, does anyone have any questions? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone from the public here to comment on this? No. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I motion to approve the request from Columbia Gas to excavate Bayfield Drive for the purpose of the gas line maintenance.
Second.
As presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Any opposed? Yeah, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to governmental reports. We have an update from the Cultural Council. Ms. Choi, thank you very much for joining us. We are excited to hear about what the Cultural Council has been doing.
Can I also make a suggestion about that recycling thing?
Sure.
Am I allowed to?
Do whatever you'd like.
Okay, well, you know, instead of making, well, I print out that sheet and I put it next to my recycling area, you know, what goes in and what goes out, but instead of making us go to your website and try to find it, I think you should tell the, you know, pizza places and all the stores that sell anything in this community to post it right next to their register or somewhere, and then on the website you'll say, "Our recycling partnership are with the following, following restaurants and following stores that are, you know, participating in our recycling program by advocating recycling products." So like Stachy's could have it up, "These are the things that can be recycled and have a recycling bin," because I notice that a lot of them don't have recycling, they just have a big trash, trash bin in their restaurant. So all the pizza blogs, everything's going in there, and people are eating there and throwing things away. So if they actually had the sign of, "These are the things that you can recycle, please feel free to take this home with you," then you could have them on the website saying, "We're in partnership with these groups, these environmentally conscious restaurants and institutions in the community," you know, and then they could be on the website saying...
Yeah, may I take that under advisement?
Right, okay, well, I was just...
Okay, so good.
Okay, so anyway, so I'm Anna Choi, I'm the chair, new chairperson just last year of the Cultural Council. I gave you a little summary of what we do. The top couple of paragraphs are just description of where, you know, within the larger Massachusetts Cultural Council, which is a state organization. Let me, so you could take a look at that. Just last year, we started participating in a new pilot program where instead of people applying for grants, then having to submit receipts and reimbursement, and then getting the money, the new pilot program, which is about, I forgot how many communities, maybe 25 out of the listed, they, we, we give them the money right away, and then they just have to submit later on a final approval thing. So it's a lot easier than piecemeal, we just give all the money right away at the beginning, and then they're obligated to send their receipts back. If they don't, then they're off the list for the next three years. And that was actually something we decided, we decided, okay, if you're responsible this time around, then you're not going to be for the next three years. So it was up to us to decide what we would do. Let's see, think, oh, so so far this year, I think there's, there's four pending grants that have issues, but we're kind of working it out. And I think there's only three that haven't submitted their final approval things yet. So everyone was pretty good in terms of this pilot program. Let me see, I think we have seven members right now, but I think soon to be eight because someone texted me even today saying they'd want to join. And I think there was a, the committee was pretty small the last couple of years, and the chairperson, Helena, was really, she's really great, and she's very knowledgeable, but she, she's like, "Ah, I don't want to do anything." But now that we have eight members, we're thinking of doing like a little subcommittee because we reserve funding on our own, and then they can do North Andover Cultural Council's sponsored events, maybe in partnership with a library or the senior center. So I'm not going to do that because I have all this other administrative stuff to do, but there are some members of the committee who are willing to be a subcommittee to organize that.
Do you think eight is enough?
My goodness, this reminds me of a TV show. I think, I think eight is enough, yeah, yeah, yes. Because we don't actually have that many meetings, we just have them in the fall to decide the grants, then in February to do kind of a wrap-up because they have, you allow them a couple of months leeway to either challenge whether they didn't get money, or to accept the fact that they got a certain amount, or to challenge that amount. So there's always like a little couple of months where they can do that. Then we, in February, and then really, nothing until June, but that's just the treasurer, myself, and Lynn Savage, the finance, town finance officer. So the, as a committee, we don't do that much stuff, but the treasurer and I have to do a lot of kind of paperwork, which really is just enough for two people and the treasurer here.
So just so I'm clear, applicants in the public in North Andover can come to the Cultural Council and say, "I have this project I want to do, I'm applying for a grant from the Cultural Council to do this project."
Right.
And you guys are deciding, yes, you, it makes sense to invest our funds that we get from the state on that project or not?
Yes.
Okay. And...
And it's clearly outlined what the guidelines are on the website, on our website, on the Mass Cultural Council server, I guess. So you can't, we get a lot of applications from people in Springfield, and they're a juggler, and they, they say, "I think I could probably get a gig at Stevens Memorial," and it's, "No, you need to have secured the gig, you need to have a date, you need to have a letter from that participating partnership institution saying, yes, we booked that person." So there's a lot of things you have to have in place before you apply.
Other, we've, and I think Sir Ben Valencourt and I, we've chatted with a number of folks who are interested and want to support, what can we do, or what can people who come to the committee do to help expand your mission or expand your horizons, if that's what you want to do?
Um, hmm, I don't know. I don't know if we necessarily need, need your help at this point, yeah.
So just, I think that that's part of, is understanding.
Right, right.
You know, what, what else can we do to support in terms of that, or getting the word out, or just...
Oh, right, right.
What's your perspective on that?
I, I don't know, I think enough people apply, I mean, I'd say 25 every year. Sometimes it's more, but sometimes we've had 40, I mean, I'm just the new chairman, I started in 217, but I was a six-year member about four or five years ago. Sometimes it's 40, but you can easily dismiss 10 to 15 of them as just people who apply to all councils throughout the state. And then the ones that are here, usually we do 10 to 15 out of 25, you know, viable grant applications.
Okay.
And there are some go-to ones, like the youth center always gets money, the senior center, the enrichment council, right, so there's some kind of like standard ones that get the, get some, the town, the concerts on the commons for the summer, so they usually do. And then the other remaining six or seven are ones that say, gee, I want to do something, I'm going to apply.
Okay.
Yeah. We don't have a lot of money, unfortunately, but we try to disperse it equally.
Goes a long way.
Right. And usually we say determining, we determine upon the audience, so we know that those town common concerts will provide, you know, the entire community some, some sort of arts education or benefit, so they get more money, right? Or the senior center, we know, will get, all the seniors will benefit from these shows that they may propose, so then we get, they get more money because it's a bigger audience.
So just for the benefit of the public, given online submission deadline of October 16th, just to share that with those who might be listening.
Right. And we, I usually send a press release to Andover, North Andover, and Lawrence, I don't know if they have a patch, then the Lawrence Eagle Tribune, the Citizen, Facebook, you know, the Andover Moms, and North Andover Moms, those sites, and, and I've, we say, that's, that's pretty good, because that, that basically tells the community, hey, here's this program that's happening, and you have until natter apply.
That's great.
Mm-hmm.
Great.
Yeah.
Any other questions for...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate it, thank you for your dedication to the town. I think the next thing on our agenda is master plan.
Sure, if you could just, so I can lead into that for you, if you'd like.
Thank you, yes, that'd be great.
We originally put in the documents that Mr. Gaffory or Eric from RKG would be here, but we felt that we could go over it, and they can attend the next meeting to give you some specifics, as you have more questions, I think, that are going to arise from the next meeting. While I have you on to the governmental reports, I will let you know that I provided some information to you about licensing fees in aggregate form, with Jillian's help, we've drafted a sort of schedule of what we look like with our peers, it's pretty interesting data. I just have been a little out of pocket trying to take a final look at that and get it to you folks. So we've collected that data, we've got a good set of sort of cohort, cohort peer data. It's an interesting little story in general.
Okay.
It's all good, but I'll give you that data, and then the board can choose how to use that moving forward.
All right.
So that's on its way, we're just a little bit behind on that. As it relates to the master plan, as you can see from the documentation, the document really came online in June, the draft, and they've been working, the planning board's been working through that, it's a 200-plus-page document that weighs a lot, this is two-sided, right? Recycling, so, don't get it, so the, so anyway, we're working through that, they continued, they had several public hearings or public meetings to get in feedback, and have made those updates, you'll see some of those red lines in the document itself. As indicated, close to two years ago, the planning board, although they're charged with the process of the master plan, felt the Board of Selectmen should sort of get that last, you know, sort of bite of the apple after the document was mostly complete. This is that time. You have the document, I certainly would recommend you start reviewing the document in whatever area or areas, or comprehensively as you have interest in. I would, I would further suggest that between now and the next meeting, if you want to, in whatever form you'd like, send me areas of comment, so that we can work together to make it a single document as opposed to, because I'm sure there'll be some overlap, right?
Right.
Any number of the members of the Board of Selectmen may comment the same way. So if you can start to forward us that feedback, what we'll prepare for the next meeting is this sort of comprehensive, you know, document that you guys can review and decide ultimately that if you're going to vote on whether to provide those comments back to the planning board. And you can do that by seeing the whole list. So we'll draft that if you give us the feedback, we'll then circulate that to you folks so you can review it, we'll come back into the next meeting, discuss it, review it in any way you'd like, and ultimately approve something for us to forward back to the planning board to be incorporated in that document. Edits, other, other, whatever feedback you have. It is the goal of the planning board to complete their process by the end of September. So this is the time for the feedback. This, again, the document's been available to the public for more than 90 days, the discussion's been going on for close to two years, it's not, there's not a lot in here that's new, and, and the consultant, which is RKG, continues to work on some of the internal feedback, some areas where they're updating the report, for instance, a reference to a ECC kindergarten-type facility obviously is happening, and there are other things in there that we need to update the report from when it was first drafted. So, so that's what I know, and again, I think the hope would be to place on the next agenda a document for you to review and approve, and we would forward that back to the planning board, which will allow them to complete their work near the end of September. And my, you know, sort of professional hope is that you folks come to some agreement with a, with a planning board on establishing this implementation committee, which would come after they adopt the final document. Any questions about that?
I would just say that your last comment about the implementation committee, we kind of started to have a little touch of that discussion, and maybe we could get some feedback from the consultant, which is, how to structure the citizen component of that implementation or committee? That, the scope of this is, now, I look at, as you lay it out at the end of the report, you know, how it, what it could be, how it could be implemented and the scope, and the complexity of that is phenomenal. How do we have good representation from this town sort of be involved in that the way we were in the planning of it? Because it seems to me to be a task that's so huge.
Yeah, yeah.
It just seems overwhelming. Who's going to have the time and expertise to digest all of that as representing the citizens in it the way we did when we were pulling it together?
Is there's the question, what type of skills, or what, what best practices, or skills, best practices, what, what, so...
Can I, can I add to your question? I, I think what you're getting at, because I had the same thought, is when you, when you spend time in the document, which I have since our last meeting, it's hard to, like, this idea of having an implementation committee seems great on the surface, but when you think of the huge scope of that document, and think of one committee being able to actually oversee the implementation of all that, it seems daunting. So I guess I was wondering, does it make sense to more have like a committee per area? I mean, I don't want to create a gazillion committees, but...
No, I thought the same thing.
I, I just can't imagine one committee, you know, looking at zoning and also looking at...
Housing.
Housing, and looking at traffic, and looking at, it's just a lot of, and maybe it's just, I, I don't want to say I think the answer is a bunch of committees, because a bunch of committees are a bunch, you know...
But some of them do interlock, because zoning and housing do go together as, as traffic.
Transportation, open space.
No, they all do, they all link, but they, it's just a lot.
Only pieces of it are linked, and who's going to drill down, I mean, again, realistically, so I guess that's part of the conversation we want to have, right?
I think the first task of the committee is to determine what resources they actually need to be effective, right? So if you have a committee that looks at the, at the plan, the overall plan, and then determines, okay, we don't have the expertise to understand housing, or the expertise to understand something else, you know, that they have to, you know, be cognizant of that and reach out and say, we need a resource in this area.
But didn't you find as you read through it that there were more areas that you personally were more interested in than others?
Definitely, definitely, yeah.
That, it's like, you know, I, you know, I really want to know more about this, but not that you didn't read it all, or skimmed through it all, but there were certain areas that I found myself, I don't know if I agree with that statement, that kind of thing, but...
A few meetings ago, Mr. Manager, we had talked about, we talked about this, where daunting was used then, and you had mentioned the idea of literally going through section by section to determine what areas would be reportable to what departments, and whether there were existing committees in town. Exactly, yeah, exactly. That was, it was the last meeting.
Symbol, I like your symbol.
That's awesome.
At least for myself.
A symbol's a good idea.
Because I do, I think it's, I think it's daunting, and there are certainly things in here that I think already fall under the preview of existing committees, that, you know, once this becomes our master plan, you can farm out to that particular committee or...
Affordable housing isn't perfect.
I mean, a lot of the zoning, right, that falls under planning.
Yeah, I, I agree, either it's, it's part of an existing committee, or I was also thinking the opposite of, a person from each exist, a handful of existing committees coming together might make sense on whatever this new committee is. So, for example, should the old Center Historic District have one, one member from their committee would be on this implementation committee, or at least a liaison to it, or something, because I feel like there's all these different existing committees that their mission's impacted by this document.
So, boy, okay, so...
So what do you think?
Yeah, I'm sweating, that's what I think. So some challenges, you know, these are challenges, right? So here's the good news you're talking about, because what happens again, so the sole goal is this, so we'll start with the easy goal. The goal is not to take that very large report with a lot of information in it and put it in someone's office shelf, remember that we did it, and then only remind ourselves that we're now 20 years later, right? So that's, so the fact we're still having these conversations, if we can have them in some form or another, in any level of frequency, that's more success than the last plan. And that's not a criticism to people who are involved, that's how every place sort of works. I, I would say that, and I'm sure your experiences have been the same, it's hard enough sometimes to ask some folks to commit time to be on committee X. So a young woman who came in, she explained the sort of challenges on managing an $8,000 grant distribution, and the legwork and paperwork, and, right? Now you ask those person in your interviews that, oh, by the way, and can you be out another one night? So I, I would say that I, we understand all of the reasons not to. The real focus, and it'll take quite a while to do, is to take this very large report, make sure that what gets attached to the back is the matrix, which is each individual item, which department it's connected to, so is there already a department? Which committee it may already be connected to, so that at least we have a rubric for, for how things work. And then with that, have the committee focus, even if it takes a year, focus on taking that outline and that rubric, and come back to you and say, here's where I think I've heard your priorities are, and chop the really large tree into a much smaller piece. There never can be an expectation that any combination of committees or single committee can take all that and make all that happen. The goal is to not stop talking about it and to focus on the higher level, and when you get some way through that, even if it's five years, talk about the next sort of piece. I think that's the goal, I, I don't want to overwhelm the committee that the belief is they're going to, they're going to implement everything, and it's, so you're going to have to create a narrative, I still think it's a committee coordinating with other committees, but I think you're going to have to create a narrative as to what you expect from them. And we are not abandoning the employee role here, because we are in many ways the constant, volunteers do come and go. The constant is that the government's here. So we're going to be committing resources, right? Planning resource, a variety of resources, we're not going away from this, but we also would like to be able to go to one group in addition to the elected leaders and say, what are you focused on, how can we work with you? As opposed to, if you can imagine, if it's a finance-related, sending our finance staff off to eight committees and trying to figure out the competing interests. So I think the real challenge is, is making sure that the charge of the committee is appropriate with what people can legitimately accomplish.
I think the help from some of these, as they were talking about these subcommittees, is maybe get an idea of what they would prioritize. What, what would you prioritize? So it sort of gives a little bit of guidance as to, you know, like, or whatever, whether it be open space or housing, what, the committees that we have that are already kind of working in those areas, what are your, what would you prioritize?
But wasn't that what the master planning process was? Isn't this document represent how the community is viewed itself moving forward? So I'm not saying you exclude them, I'm saying, though, that this document wasn't, was done in the opposite, it was not done in a vacuum. This document is intended, I mean, your feedback to the planning board should not just be individual feedback, it'll be your feedback as to how you interpret how the process collected data. This document is, in fact, the culmination of our most significant or elaborate outreach process. It included committees and other processes, and so I'm not excluding, I don't mean to exclude them, but the document is setting the priority, the document is intended to set the priority.
Except you can't do everything all at once, when I'm talking about prioritizing.
I agree with that, yeah.
That's what I'm prioritizing.
Prioritizing the, yeah.
Yeah, the order in which we would apply to, and sometimes the order changes because of certain, something happens, and it's like, well, that's got to get put aside for a while because we've got this in front of us now. because we've got this in front of us now, I mean, that's just, that's just government.
And I could see an implementation committee also taking that, taking this piece and looking out, well, what are the things that we can do that can help kick off other sections that may happen independently, you know, if we're talking about certain types of housing, let's focus on zoning overall, and then certain zoning changes, the private sector may potentially respond and take advantage of, of those changes by helping us achieve our mission, whether it's, it's housing or.
And it's also jumping in and maybe taking some of the low-hanging fruit, you know, we're already kind of working towards that, let's get some of that done, but I do.
I think our feedback's important at, at a public meeting, right, where we talk about, well, what are the things that really stick out to me, to Rosemary, to Chris, to Regina, to Dick, and then, I mean, take all that, and I think it's, it's general good guidance, right, it's ultimately what we do every year when we sit down and do our budget policy statement, you know, what's the direction that we want the town to move, I mean, this is the big, not annual, but every decade, right, we take something like this, this document, and try to give it as a blueprint to our community, and.
So with that, are there communities that have done a good job at implementing their master plan? Is that, I guess that would be the other thing, which is, you know, somebody else has done a good job, let's take a peek.
I think the, I'm, the, I think there's a more common practice where the document does not become a living document, I, I can't point to one, that doesn't mean they don't exist, and I, but, but it is, what we're experiencing, the really good part about this process, we got all excited about the fact that this is a master planning process, I think sometimes the excitement is because it happens once a generation, so I think that there are sort of groups better than others, I, I have seen some groups nationally that, that do some of the things that we've talked about, make it a more current, regularly talked about it, there are some groups better, but it, it's less common than is the, you know, sort of alternative.
So it's really, we got to.
And some of those ideas, yeah, I'm providing to you are some examples I've looked at nationally, where there are matrices and points of contact, and sort of owners and champions and those kind of things, I just always look at the master plan, it's interesting enough, the master plan is, is in many ways the primary, or certainly most important, policy document, and you're the policy-setting board, so I get the priority thing, I, I think the prioritization of picking choices, how much time I can commit.
Yeah, that's.
Every day, right?
That's right, we have to pick and choose.
I would say that the, the direction of any committee will only be as successful as the chief policymaking board makes it through helping that committee determine what its priorities are. I think this board determines the priority by reading this report, and directs that committee to focus on those priorities, because you're the chief policy group, that doesn't mean they don't provide input, but you're going to need to provide very specific leadership and direction to this committee, because you're, what you're experiencing is correct, if you send them off and hand them the entire document, it's going to be,
overwhelming, right?
It's going to be overwhelming, so I think the board owns the obligation, and we certainly will work with you around those things, we can identify some of the low-hanging fruit and some of the early successes, but the board, whether it's individually, and Dick says, I'm big into housing, and Phil says open space, whatever the combination, maybe you split it amongst yourselves, but in the end, the board has to set a direction for a committee and say, this is, this is what we need you to work on, and when you're done with that, come back with the ideas, and then we'll give you a new set of things, rather than giving them a report and say, come back to us with the priorities, I think it needs to be driven by you folks.
Do you think it's, it would be worthwhile to consider that each one of us score where our priorities are, and just see if there's a, a gelling?
Yes.
It might just be a way to get, get started.
It's a big document, like we said, I think so.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense.
So we take the seven areas, and then we start with the high level, and then we break it down to the initiatives, each one of those seven areas.
And kind of score what you think is in that, maybe that would be something the staff could help us with, is do some sort of a sheet, a scoring sheet, but.
Yeah, I think it's good, I think what I would suggest is, let's start, let's, let's get the planning board to approve a document, and let's, let's prepare this matrix, which will again chop two-hundred-and-twenty pages down, I'm off on the pages, two-twenty-five, takes the two-hundred-and-twenty-five pages and chops it down to, say, five or ten, now all of a sudden you just took two-twenty-five to five or ten.
Yeah.
Then you may not want to take that entire ten and score them, but now we just, we squeeze the pile down, and so getting into the scoring system you're talking about, you know exactly what the items are, as opposed to flipping through the pages.
Yeah, I agree.
Right, and then, so I think the idea of scoring is a valid one, it comes with the, with completing the document and squeezing that document into sort of an executive summary, you know, whatever appendix.
spreadsheet.
Spreadsheet, yeah.
Like, yeah.
Name of the project, purpose of the project, correct.
So it's almost like each category we would score, but then after that, you would take all of that and say, okay, out of these different categories, which one comes higher than the other? But at least it's, it's a way to get started.
We do that with the, the capital plan as a scoring system associated, we take every project, we, we
Yes, exactly, yeah.
We rank it in two different criteria, and we add them up and say, okay, does this look like it, then you're allowed some flexibility to say, geez, that wasn't quite how I saw it, so, but I think we need to start with the plan followed by this sort of matrices behind it, so that you're knowing, you know what, you'll know it when you see it, right? It's much harder to see it when it's in a large narrative, so maybe we start with the matrix and then see if we can find some way to sort, you know, filter, total, average, mode.
But then, the other thing it does is it gives, I think, better transparency and, backbone to whatever sort of
That's true.
Perspective we come up with, so that it, those are talking points, if, for nothing else.
Yeah, I almost wonder too, if, just thinking out loud, which can be dangerous for me, is maybe getting some of the staff to also set what they think are priorities as well, because there's certain things that they have more knowledge of, why, gee, we need to tackle this now because of, or we could, I suppose, do the scoring and then people comment and critique it.
Yeah, I think we provide, again, this is a policy document, so we will provide the sort of practical feedback to you for, like, if you come back, I, I think, I don't want to feel like I'm influencing, you know, we get into this, this is one of these cases where, although sometimes the criticism, not by you folks, is the other way, this is yours, we, we will, absolutely, we're not going anywhere, I mean, we will weigh in, but, but we need to get some policy direction, I don't want to influence the policy direction, now if you come down to that as to a series of choices, one can be done in a year and it costs, you know, ten thousand, and, but I don't want to do, I think what we'll try to do through the matrix, the matrix should include an estimate of the cost and the general length of time, and use that data first, and then if we have to pick between things, I'll give you some feedback about how practical it is.
Well, I think that, like, a great point would be transportation, we, we don't know which necessarily, you would know, and of course DBW would know, where, where do we have some real problem roads, where they're going to need money or retention, that should have all, be all part of it.
It's already in the plan, yeah.
It should be all part of the plan so that we don't say, oh, let's go build this over here, when we've got this over here falling apart.
But I don't think we're talking the level of that nuance, are we?
Well, I don't know.
Yeah, no, but that's, so that document, again, if we can, let's get as far as the document being adopted and with that, this matrix, and, and again, because it puts it into a, just, it's just from a read perspective, you can, you can literally see what we're talking about.
Bullets, yeah.
Well, it's, it'll be a matrix, so it'll have maybe a project identifier, maybe a project title, a cost, how long it's going to take, department that has jurisdiction, whatever else, and you'll get through this stuff, and I think from that, some of those questions will be answered, and in the cases where they're not, absolutely, we're going to say, here's how we feel about this, this is, we can't, we can't, you know, we can't do this, or we can't do it, so if we get that far, I think it helps, and ultimately, if we can get the board to make the choices on priorities with that kind of input, then that direction can be given to the committee, because the committee will have a score sheet of where their priorities are, then all of a sudden it doesn't seem as daunting a task as to hand the committee two-hundred pages and say.
Anything can be done, if we, if we, we can really chip away at it if we have.
I really, I really like that approach.
Is that better?
Very good, yeah.
So a pivot table with something like sorting columns?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, I forget.
Please, I'll teach you how to do pivot tables, Laurie, my favorite.
I don't think either of you know Laurie is going to do the pivot tables on this one, I think they're going to come off the consultants, but, but it's fine, we can work on pivot tables, great, we know what we're getting you, so that's, that's where you get us feedback, and we, we have communicated to our consultants, we want that kind of, sort of matrices as part of this product, and they're aware and working on it.
Agreed.
Great. Awesome. Any final comments on the master plan draft?
No, I think we've, I think we're up to a good start with this, this plan, so I'm excited. This plan and our plan would.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the job posting, trying to make some comments, Andrew, on.
Sure, we are, you know, there's a number of different positions on there, as we typically have, but we have two, we're getting closer to the conclusion of the process on the community support position, that should be concluding in the next week plus, the assistant account manager position, we've advertised that, we got a very strong number of resumes in terms of quantity, good pool, screen committee will be doing their work over the next two weeks to try to bring that pool further down, and we're on schedule to, you know, complete that process, I think we talked about mid to late September, somewhere in that range. Yep.
Great.
And as we talked about with that role, when we get to a much smaller group, they'll offer the opportunity, we did with the DBW director, sort of this meet and greet segment that you can do in teams, or you can do, can't do beyond teams, because we just have open meeting law violations, but you can do in teams, or as individuals, probably prior to a selecting's meeting in the future, to meet a couple of the individuals and provide non-prioritized feedback before making a final decision, so we're going to do that, it'll be in September sometime.
Great.
I have one, and it's, as probably most of you know, we just lost a really dear friend of this building in the school department, in Millie Matosso, and we have so much to be thankful for, with all her beautiful photographs, not just hers, we have other people donated wonderful things to Town Hall, and great, great pictures of artwork, and more to be coming in, but she gave us the opportunity with the last time we renovated Town Hall, and with this time, with the addition of preserving our history and having people come in, and it's almost kind of like going to a museum a little bit, and it makes the building really attractive, and I will, absolutely, I do miss her terribly already, she's a great lady, and, you know, God bless her, so.
Other than, next time we meet, school's going to be in and our kindergarten's going to be open.
I know, how exciting.
Dr. Gilligan's really driving, really, literally driving the bus now, so that's it.
That's right, it's looking very good.
I'm excited to throw my middle one into that new kindergarten, so hopefully it's open, fingers are tightly crossed.
So you'll, you'll be attending the orientation Wednesday evening?
I, yes, actually, no, it's not, it's Tuesday.
It's tomorrow.
No, next Tu, oh, this Wednesday, yes, yes, Sarah's attending and I'm not, I'll have the littlest one, so.
Well, I've seen some photos recently of some people we know in town who have a little one, like, hanging on mama's leg, you're like, don't take me, so you might want to let Sarah do that, except it'd really be a tear.
I think that's going to be me holding on to her, so.
Yeah.
But it looks great, and the community feedback's been, been awesome, so I think a lot of, a lot of positive remarks that we made about our town staff, and about the school department and making sure that project got completed, and I think that, I don't think we had many doubters, actually, and now we just continue to raise that, that bar, right, and so, good job to everyone all around.
Right, deserves much of that credit.
All right, Mr. Valencio.
I have nothing. Been a great summer, I think, you know, I've said it in the past, we've had some fantastic outdoor opportunities in this town, and I hope people had a chance to take advantage of them, and, you know, go to the farmer's market, or the artisan's market, or Fourth of July sheep sharing, we've got the Fall Festival coming up, the exercise program that's just finishing up, Stevens Pond, on and on and on, and all the great recreation opportunities we've had outside, and, and, you know, it's been a great summer for it, it's been hot, and I hope everyone's had a chance to get out and enjoy themselves.
Yeah, I'll piggyback on that, I was going to thank the Youth and Recreation Group for great work with all the summer activities, really awesome, had great reviews of everything going on at Stevens Pond, there's a lot of additional offerings this year, it was great, so thank you to them for that effort, and as well for the kindergarten and getting that
I like great studies.
For opening, a lot of great progress, yeah. All right, with that, I guess we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second it?
All in favor.